Good morning, it's 8.30. I'll open our final council meeting for the triennium. Taku, would you give us a carry here please? Thank you. We've got no apologies. We just note that councillor Murray is on a leave of absence. Seems to be having a nice time. Public forum. Marcus Newton Howes of 350 Aotearoa, would you like to come forward? Minutes to speak to us. You just need to turn the microphone on and questions at the end.
Tenokoto Katoa, good morning all. Hello, thanks for this opportunity. My name is Marcus and I'm a member of the Ponekei branch of the climate action organisation Aotearoa 350, which itself is part of the global climate justice movement 350.org. We have requested this opportunity to speak with you today in order to present our current homegrown energy campaign. The essential idea is very simple. It's an easy win in supporting a fast and just transition to 100% renewable electricity and will be of significantly more benefit to the people of Aotearoa than the costs that are sunk into it. In other words, this is an idea that will yield excellent bang for your buck. And it will do so in line with strong community environment and environmental principles. A little background, climate change is a very real threat to the people and environment of the world, of Aotearoa and of Aotearoa. The most recent report coming from the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change has this to say. One, it is unequivocal that human influence has warmed the atmosphere, ocean and land. Two, there is high confidence that sea levels will continue to rise even beyond 2100. Three, limiting human activities that cause global warming, such as fossil fuel use, will reduce risks to marine biodiversity, fisheries and ecosystems and their ability to provide services to humans. Four, climate change risks to health, livelihoods, food security, water supply, human security and economic growth are projected to increase with global warming of 1.5 degrees Celsius above pre-industrial levels and increase further with two degrees Celsius increase. And five, pathways limiting global warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius with no or limited overshoot would require rapid and far-reaching transitions to an energy, land, urban and overstructure use. Also, there are obviously two main ways organisations like councils need to think about tackling climate change. First, obviously, the effects of it have already started, so mitigation activities are needed. And second, they need to obviously stop being part of the problem and start being part of the solution. So, you know, stopping activities that exacerbate climate change and starting activities that ameliorate it. For example, by moving from fossil fuel use to clean energy. Aotearoa 350 Ponekei's homegrown energy campaign arose on reflection of two things. A, the need to convert fossil fuel use to clean energy use. And B, the fact that the electricity generation situation in Aotearoa, whilst on the surface of it seeming pretty good. You know, we get around 80.5% of our power from renewable sources and the government is looking to go 100%. Unfortunately, it's fairly broken in a few ways. There are barriers to Aotearoa being able to increase clean, green power generation. Comes down to the way the industry is structured and the regulations governing the way energy projects are consented. The second stage of our campaign is in fact lobbying government, the central government, to make common sense changes to this legislation, but there is much that can be done straight away. I'm sure I don't have to tell you guys that the energy poverty is a very real thing in Aotearoa. In the last 30 years, household power prices rose by 79% and more than 100,000 households are spending over 10% of their income on power and live in energy hardship. So one workable solution with today's technology requiring comparatively little initial outlay or ongoing maintenance that sets clean, green and community focused as new normals and would be a great example of councils leading by example with regards to climate change is our current campaign ask, distributed energy generation. This means generating energy at local slash community levels. For example, by putting PV cells on the roofs of all Aotearoa City Council owned buildings. Spaces right there waiting to be used. And doing this lessens your reliance on expensive dirty power, which saves the council money, helps meet environmental policy targets and builds community rapport. We think it would be a positive step for all city councils in the Wellington region, including Aotearoa City Council, to, and I'll just throw all my slides I never didn't need. There we go. Had to cut down the odd speech, to do three things. One, commit to studying feasibility with an eye to publicly endorse a distributed energy generation policy by June next year. Two, publicly announce by June next year their council's plan to have all of its buildings running on locally produced, green sourced energy, electricity. And three, moving ahead with getting the policies and plans in place so the PV cells can start being erected on council building roofs shortly thereafter. Now, obviously, there are many ways of generating clean, green electricity, but photovoltaic cell technology has come along a lot in recent years and there's an awful lot of space, you know, ready for them to be erected just waiting there on the tops of your buildings. So PV cells could easily become the backbone of a locally generated energy generation scheme. Thank you very much for your time today and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Marcus. Questions, anyone? Josh?
Kia ora, first of all, thanks for coming in. This looks like a really good campaign and really appreciate you coming and giving us your time. Just wanted to quickly ask, to your knowledge, have any other councils in a particular area in the Wellington region already signed on to this?
Not as of yet, to my knowledge. But another member of Aotearoa 350 Ponekei branch has presented this campaign ask to the Wellington City Council. And I'm not entirely sure who's doing the lower hut city council. Feel like there's another one. But yeah, I'm sure that's in the offing. I've been very busy with a lot of other things, so I've missed a few meetings unfortunately, but yeah, we're on to it.
Yeah, and just in terms of your presence across the country, is this like a localised grassroots Wellington type thing? Or is it right across the country? Is it international?
Well, we have an Aotearoa 350 that sort of organises stuff across the whole country. And homegrown energy is the Wellington Ponekei branch's sort of version of it. Other branches around the country have their own take on our current campaign push.
Cool, thanks very much.
Anyone else? No? Thank you very much, Marcus.
Thank you.
You're free to either leave or you can sit and listen to us. Okay, thank you. I've got no conflicts of interest declarations from anyone? No? No notifications of extraordinary business? So we'll move to confirmations of minutes from the 25th of August. I'll move it to put it on the table, seconded by councillor Haywood. Any issues in there for anyone? All those in favour? All those against? Carried. Report of the mayor. It's been yet another busy month, but a sad one, obviously, with the passing of the Queen and Ken Douglas. So Geoff and I actually attended, started off in the beginning of the month or end of the last month with the Titabai Horticultural Flower Show, because Geoff's the patron. So judging the flower show, so that was a good one. Wendy and I went to the Select Committee on the Three Waters, another interesting one, with upper hut sitting behind us. We started September with the Tongan flag raising and then we followed that with the inducting Neil Aramira into the Wall of Fame. That taken a while to organise. I attended the Ford to Spring event at the Women's Refuge next door. Then the fire station, celebrating their Step Up Sky Tower Challenge and witnessed the arrival of the Taiaha, which was gifted to them from another brigade. And then Phil and I joined Carolyn Mariko and the Tama Men's War under Fitness Group to celebrate their eight week programme. I have to say, I'd quite like to join it because there was a huge amount of loss, so I'm looking forward to the second one. Whitby Tennis Club, went there for their open day, followed that with the Aotearoa Football Club prize giving and then the Whitby, sorry, then the Waves netball prize giving. So a month of prize givings. Then we obviously celebrated a Maori language week and our flag raising. Izzy and I attended the Pacific Health Aotearoa Volleyball Plus Tournament on Saturday. Then the Aquipas Church, where Moes and Izzy joined me for that. So I opened that one in Linley Place. The La Fali Blessing, which Taku and I did on the Friday. And then Minister Wood's cut the ribbon on the Monday for the Jobs and Skills Hub in Cannons Creek. If you haven't been up and had a look, do go. Obviously, we had Ken's funeral on Monday. And then we had Tuesday Regional Transport Committee, Civil Defence Committee and Wellington Regional Leadership Committee. A whole day of sitting in Wellington Regional Council offices. Please, that one came to an end, it was a very long meeting day. Finally, I'd like to actually thank all you councillors for the effort you've put in this term. I really enjoyed working with all of you. It's been friendly. We may agree to disagree on a number of items, but we've kept it clean. And I have to say, it's been really enjoyable and I've really enjoyed it. Taku, I'd like to thank you and the team from Nadi Tua for your support and guidance over the last three years. And finally, to Wendy and the team and all the council staff. You've reported in the dealings we've had with councillor Benson Purb. So your patience and professionalism is appreciated because I know we can be tough at times. And that brings the end of my final report, so kiakaha. Bring on the elections. Okay, committee recommendations. Councillor Leggett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move the committee recommendations, all the committee recommendations of Tipuna Kauraro meeting of the 1st of September 2022.
Seconded by councillor Duncan. Any issues in there for anyone? Okay, all those in favour? All those against? Carried. We move to our reports, draft annual plan. I'm going to move it, put it on the table, seconded by councillor Ford. Invite Joe to speak first.
So this is the draft annual report. We're still going through some audit issues, predominantly around the Three Waters performance standards, which is similar to the issues that we had last year. And the other one is also about the water quality with the standing up of the water regulator. That's still going through Audit New Zealand to the Office of the Auditor General. We're expecting that we will have, as on previous years, we will have a qualification in relation to one of the water quality standard, one of the water standards. And we will also have a matter of emphasis on the other. But that again will be something that's worked through and we're expecting that will be resolved in time for the, well, it will be resolved in time for our November adoption. We're within the statutory deadline. The statutory deadline for adoption of the annual report is the 31st of December. In relation to the financials, we've got a couple of loose ends that we're just tidying up. But the numbers, as they stay, there won't be any, there may be a few movements and some disclosures, but there were no significant movements in the numbers at this time.
Okay, before we move to questions, we're going to have Warren Allen, the Chair of Audit and Risk, and Sam Nicole, our auditor, come up and speak to us. So Warren, do you want to go first?
Thank you very much, Mayor, and good morning councillors. As the mayor said, Warren Allen's my name and I've had the pleasure through this triennium of chairing the Audit and Risk Subcommittee of Council. So as an independent chair, I bring an independent view and approach to the work. And the comments that, brief comments I would like to make this morning is that the annual report process each year is a really big piece of work, not only for the finance team of council, but many other members of the management team. And like a lot of processes, some years they go very well, go along smoothly. And other years, it's a bit more of a challenge. And I probably don't need to remind you that we're in pretty interesting times. And this year has been a challenge. The things that have challenged the team this year, this is the first annual balance or annual report using the new DataScape IT project. And it took the team quite a bit longer to get to a position where they were comfortable with, in particular, the fixed asset numbers. And also, the team was impacted by illness through COVID. And that sort of caused a delay as well. So normally, at this time of the year, we would be bringing to you the finalised, fully audited set of financial statements and annual report. But we're very close and Aotearoa City is one of the more advanced councils in the country this year. Many of them will not get their annual reports finalised by the end of the calendar year, which is the extended regulated deadline. So all the work has been completed by the city council's management team. All the work is pretty well completed by Sam and his team representing the auditor general. But as Joe indicated, quite a bit of the information for the annual report comes from Wellington Water. And so, you know, we need to wait for Wellington Water Management Team to provide that information and we need to wait for their auditors, which is a different set of auditors than we have here at the city council, to sign off on that information. And like most city councils throughout the country at the moment, there is what's called a non-standard audit report. And it means sort of unusual wording in the audit report, it's a reflection of the times. And that non-standard audit report requires approval by the auditor general. And they have a very detailed process which takes some time to finalise that. I understand that that's scheduled for next week. And once that happens, the entire process should be able to be finalised at the November meeting of the first council. So a little bit different, nothing to be concerned about. The process has taken a little bit longer, but a good process has been held and certainly from the work of the Audit and Risk Committee. You know, we will come along and speak to the new council in November when the annual report is finally approved. Mayor, I'm very happy to answer any questions or hand over to Sam.
Thank you, we'll go to Sam first. We have quick questions.
Thank you, Chair. So I have nothing to add to the summary Joe and Warren have described, but just thought I'd take this opportunity to introduce myself. So I'm Sam Nicole, I'm the appointed auditor on behalf of the auditor general and filling the role that you may be familiar, Grant Taylor, my colleague, filled until his six-year term expired. But happy to assist council with any questions on the papers.
Thank you. Councillor Trillin?
I do have some questions, but they're probably not relating to the audit. So I don't know if anyone has any questions for?
For this paper? Have you, yeah?
Just for the whole paper generally, I'm happy to?
For the annual report?
Yep, yep, okay, cool, perfect. Awesome, well, my first one is in relation to our climate change targets. And I'm just referring to page 80 on Diligent, where it notes that the business case, which we had decided we're going to develop in the long-term plan for actions for council to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and the LTP would set a target of having that completed within this year and we haven't achieved that. So I just wanted to ask, is there a particular reason we haven't been able to achieve that yet? And what is our timeline looking like for getting it completed?
Nick?
Yes, through you, Chair. Thank you, Josh, for your question. We have engaged a consultant, Toito, to undertake the assessment and it's just been the delay in the conveyor belt we've been in with their other work. So we should have that result within the month. So we're delayed, but we have still got that data coming as per the business case set up anyway.
Cool, thank you very much. And my second question in relation to climate change as well, so a couple of times we note that there's still some ongoing work for developing our pathway to net zero by 2050. I just wondered if we could have an update on where we're sitting with that in particular and whether or not the work to a pathway to a net zero at 2050 includes a pathway to 50% reduction by 2030 as per the most recent IPCC guidelines.
Yep, through you, Chair. So Josh, we actually brought a revised thinking to the executive leadership team this week around the varying policy changes, so the vehicle kilometres travelled etcetera that are coming through from government, around how we reprioritise our focus to head towards the reductions at a faster pace. So fair to say, we're in train on revised thinking around our climate programme, which we would be bringing to the next council for the LTP because it will require more funding and a ramping up of our goals to get there at the timeframe that we want to. So we're undertaking that work now based on all the different policy changes that we've been analysing and assessing where we're currently at to improve.
And to just clarify, so are you confident that by the time we get to the next long-term plan, there will be some clear options for council to consider in relation to what pathway they want to choose and how that's going to be funded?
That's correct.
Okay, cool, thanks very much. My next question was in relation to drinking water, page 65 of Diligent. And this was in relation to the number of leaks that we're experiencing. So I'm just finding exactly where this was. Underwater is supplied efficiently. There was a jump. It seemed quite a major jump in the number of, in the amount of real water loss from the network reticulation system that didn't achieve our targets. And I was just wondering, do we see that as a particularly bad year, bit of an anomaly? Or is that a trend we need to be worried about where it's going to keep getting worse or just not get better?
Andrew or Wendy? Wendy?
Thanks, Josh. This is apparently a region-wide phenomenon. There have been leaks all across the Wellington Water, shareholding councils. And Wellington Water is actually concerned about supply over summer and the issues that that will bring. Is it a trend? I think it's probably the beginning of a trend. There's no particular reason, but the fact that it's happening across the whole region tells me that, anyway, that there is something going on and Wellington Water has variously put it down to not just the aging pipes, but some of those earthquakes that have had some impacts and shifted the ground around those pipes. And it's starting to show itself in leaks. So I don't think we can say this is a year, an unusual year. I think we will probably see more of it.
Okay, cool, thank you. And my last question was in relation to the harbour and water quality tests, page 70 on Diligent. And just noting that in particular, this was the percentage of required recreational water quality tests undertaken at selected sites in Aotearoa. Is it 71%, down from 100% last year? The rationale that was attached to it attributed to that largely to weather events and COVID. And I'm just wondering why, if it was weather events and COVID, we still managed to hit 100% in the previous year and we had such a major drop down to 71% this year? And are we expecting it to be similar next year or are we going to be coming back up again?
Through the mayor, Melvin or Sam, do you have the answer to that?
They'll have to get back to you. Councillor Duncan actually asked the same question, so I did get the answer that the reason was COVID, but I don't know if we questioned further why we managed to do it better the year before. We'll have to get back to you on that.
Cool, thanks. That's all my questions, thank you.
Councillor Haywood?
Thank you, kura matua. Thank you for the preparation of the report. I have two lines of inquiry. I'm not sure how many questions is going to be, my main required subs. The first one, I'm going to just reflect on the advice the mayor gave me last night when this item came up in our conversation briefly. Be nice, I will be nice. But I'm going to foreshadow that, obviously, the substantive parts can be talked about when this report comes up for approval again. But on page 62 regarding wastewater, there is, I want to get some clarity as to why we still have a disconnect between Wellington Water and our reporting around the complaints pertaining to the total number of complaints received per 100 connections. Because there is a discrepancy that's noted in note 19. And I want to, can I get some commentary from officers as to when we're going to get that all tidied up? Kia ora.
I might get Joe to answer that one.
So we, so the issue we've got is the recognition of complaints. So do we, if there is 10 complaints about the same thing, historically, we've only counted as one, there's only one event. But the requirement is for us to have recorded 10 complaints. With the implementation of DataScape and the new customer relationship management system, we now capture all those complaints and then they are sent over to Wellington Water versus in the past, between us and Wellington Water, 10 complaints and the same applies to leaks and across them. If there were 10 complaints, it was only historically counted as one. And that's something quite common across a number of councils.
Sup? So from the Wellington Water perspective, are they equally pulling back to council about their reporting of complaints that they have received directly?
Through the mayor, I'm not able, I don't have that information at this time. I do know that we are the ones that capture, we're the first point of call for a complaint. It then goes, all those complaints go to Wellington Water and then they all come back to us now through that.
Okay, then on to the next group, which is, can I just confirm that there is unlikely to be any adverse opinions coming up as a consequence of the end process with OAG going through with Wellington Water or with us? Is it like, are you foreshadowing the likelihood of there being any adverse opinions?
Sam, are you?
Yeah, I'll just comment, it's an issue for the auditors, but the auditors work for the OAG. So they, the OAG is king and stragard, I suppose, is what I'm saying, but I'll leave it.
Thank you. So councillor may recall the 2021 annual report included a qualification relating to the completeness of complaints. We expect that to continue for the 2022 year for the conditions the last line of questioning outlined. Nothing has substantively changed through that period. Part of your line of questioning was how will that evolve over time? And so, as Joe described, you've moved to the DataScape EAP and it's an opportunity to look at your practices for capturing complaints and how they pass to Wellington Water. So that is part of the path out of it. In respect of the water quality measure that, sorry, the water loss that councillor Trillin raised in his line of questioning, we also had a qualification for that last year. Wellington Water and their auditor, Audit New Zealand, are working through how that has changed in the period. There's been some changes to how it's been measured. We've got a meeting next week to understand how that fits together and what impact it might have on the opinion for both Wellington Water and the six councils that rely on Wellington Water Aotearoa being one of them.
Sup? So just so I'm clear here, because if I recall correctly, was asset condition was one of the issues that came up as part of a note in the previous reports from the auditor. Is that what you're pertaining to in terms of what your previous answer?
No, asset condition relates to, I think, the long-term plan report.
Right.
We're not issuing a report because we're not in a long-term plan renewal cycle this year.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Let's answer my questions.
Anybody else got questions? Councillor Leggett?
This is a question in relation to balanced budget. I note that, well, from what I can see, for reference to balanced budget, benchmark is on? on page one hundred and twenty-nine. I was looking at it from the point of view as an ordinary rate payer. How can I see where we're going towards achieving a balanced budget? I, when you look at the financials, we've got a surplus of twenty million dollars this year, and if I was an ordinary rate payer, I'd say, what's going on? You've got all this money and you're going on about a balanced budget. Now, I just wonder whether this is the place to make some reference towards how we're going towards it and explaining it a bit more. Even on page one hundred and twenty-nine, I don't, I don't even know what the green means.
Jo's going to explain it.
Yes, can, well, very good.
First, I'll explain why we haven't got to a balanced budget yet. And yes, we do show a big surplus, and yet we're only saying that we're ninety-nine percent of the way towards, is it ninety-nine percent, of way towards a balanced, ninety-nine point three. The major movements in that is the balanced budget doesn't include, when we calculate the balanced budget, it doesn't include vested assets, it doesn't include net gain on interest rate swaps. And of course, with the interest rates moving so much this year, we've actually made, our debts gone up, expenses have gone up, but actually we've made money on swaps, and also around revaluation. But we can actually add a narrative on a hundred, on page one hundred and twenty-nine to actually fill that out. But, so the big thing with the balanced budget is it doesn't include a lot of, if you look at page eighty, eighty-four, you'll see those, the vested revenue from vested assets, ten point eight million, we've got interest rate swaps, we've got investment property valuation gains and net gains on sales, which doesn't get included in the calculation. But it is a bit of an accountant's...
Sorry, I, yeah, I understand that. My point was, I'm not sure, and I think you're going some way towards it. I'm not sure whether the average rate payer, if they wanted to read this or whatever, would actually understand that. So some clarification around that, I think, would be really valuable, because, you know, it's hard enough to work your way through this as it is. But, you know, if you, if you just see a surplus there, a net surplus, and you think, what the devil's going on, they're collecting more money than they're spending, why are our rates going?
Warren's going to answer you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor. Councillor Leggett, it's important to understand that those three items that Jo talked about do not deliver cash. The non-cash items...
Sup, I agree. No, no, I understand that, I'm not sure whether...
Yeah, so that...
Reading it would understand, that's my only point, I understand it.
Yeah, I think, I think that that's a really good point, and, you know, if clarification is made in the report, then the point that they're non-cash adjustments, I think, is really important.
We can make that, okay. Any more questions? Okay, moved and seconded, so all in favour? All against, carried. That moves us to our next report, end of triennium matters. I'll move it, put it on the table, seconded by councillor Waddell, sorry. Straightforward report, any questions on this one for anyone? Yes, councillor Haywood?
Yeah, they might have to come back and give me a response on this. If, with regards to entity C, what is the likelihood that the new council would have to look at measures around the future of the joint committee wastewater treatment plant and landfill?
We're doing some work on that right now, so yes, it is not just likely it will have to occur.
Anyone else? No? All those in favour? All those against, carried. Now I'd like to invite Wendy to give her end of triennium report.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. It's not often I get to reflect on anything very much in free form, but I won't keep you that long. Reflecting on the last three years, it's been an unusual time, as they keep on saying, hasn't it, with COVID? So that has been a really dominant characteristic of the last three years. And if you put that alongside reform and some of our, you know, whether it's water reform, or RMA reform, or climate change reform, there's a heap going on in the sector. So, and notwithstanding all of that, and the distraction all of those has given us, we've certainly managed to get some things done. When I first started here at council, seven, eight years ago, the link roads were the biggest capital project this council had ever undertaken. And we managed to complete them in the last year. We've got a beautiful new motorway that is bringing people to Porirua, I keep on saying, so, and it's really brought us some benefits, I think, and will continue to do so. And we've had some, you know, other wins over the last three years. The mayor and I were, and some of the staff who are in the room, Hano was one of them, who received the LGNZ Excellence Award for our streamside planting, and councillor Wehapi was there as well. So we awkwardly managed to get up on the stage to get our environmental award, and then astounded ourselves by winning the supreme award. So, so notwithstanding the difficulties that have been around, we've had a pretty successful three years. Just want to mention the demolition of the Marines Hall, you know, that's a, that's a thing, and Titahie Bay will be better off for the beautiful park we are creating there. From, don't really want to say very much more, want to show my appreciation to all of you. You've been a fantastic council to work with. Want to acknowledge Taku and Ngatitua, you've been really important personal support and fantastic partners. We're going from strength to strength, I think, in that partnership. Our executive leadership teams are getting together on a regular basis now, and I think that will reap some real rewards in the future. So that's fantastic. I did want to just reflect on Ken Douglas's passing. I didn't know Ken before I started here, but he was a bit of force to be reckoned with, wasn't he? And I think we will need all of his qualities, his foresight, his grittiness, sometimes his bad language, we might need some of that too. So just thinking of Ken as we finish up the training.
Thank you. Taku, your turn.
Atena koe, kaeta mia. Anita Baker, emihiake ki a koe. Emihiake ki a koorua. Totata nei kuii. Emoiake, maravu koe Ken Douglas. Emoi rae taranga tira. Haere atu ra koorua, ketua teanae. Well, as we come to another, end of another triennium period for our city, our city, Porirua City, we are all aware that council over this period has faced a numerous amount of challenges. As many have said, COVID being the highlight, but particularly how we address that issue within our city, there's nothing but, but, but high praises for our city that looked after particularly the vulnerable, particularly our communities and other ethnic communities within our city. I strongly feel that we did a really great job there. I've put together a three-point check of tikana, and I just want to share them with you, and I've highlighted them in this way. No tarodo, naku tarodo, kaoroai tiwi. With your contribution and my contribution, the people will be well, and I think we've done well in that point. The second one is phono matanga, have we looked after each other? I think the debate has been strong in some cases, but I think we all could walk out the corridor and say, hi, hello, kilda, wave out across the row. And the third one is mana. I think we can all say that we have come through the triennium with our mana intact as a council, as representatives of the wards. It's been absolutely fantastic. For Ngatitua, we've built a closer, stronger relationship with council, a full meaningful engagement around different programs that are now coming online between Tua and the council. We let out a national ko papa around Calliope Street. That went global, I mean, that went national, and we were at the heart of that. We let out on it. And I had an amount of calls and texts, and well done, well done, your council needs a pat on the back. And now I have no doubt that other councillors, councilors are pushing hard around the country. For the National Road TG, known as tarangi, tiaro ta, tarangi aita, is another big plus for our city. All I can say moving forward is to thank all the councillors that have been with us for this, for this period, and kia kaha. Hope it goes well for your campaigns, and thank you all for the stuff. Kilda.
Thank you, Tiki. Okay, we're going to move into public excluded, so I'll move that, seconded by councillor Leggett. All those in favour? Those against, carried.